This meeting is being recorded.
I've got seven oh two and I'm going to call the meeting to order. Good evening again. Here from public. Here from public. Last time here from public. First selectmen's briefing. I'll try to be brief. We have Public Works completed reinstalling the back gate on the transfer station. We're going to have signage up there. And this pertains to both residents and personnel. That those premises are off limits unless you're there on specific town business. The gate is going to be locked. Folks hear anything on that?
That's one gate. What about the other one?
The other one's up and working, the new one.
Is there a notice on it?
The front gate.
Yes, is there a notice on it?
The only sign that's there is the old sign and we're going to be reconfiguring some new signage. When you say signage on the front gate, do you mean, what do you mean, Catherine?
Well, I was thinking we're putting signage on the back gates that says that it's only open at certain dates and times. I didn't know if there would be any signage on the front gate.
No, but the large sign is there and we cleared it all up and it's all cleaned up. About what the hours of the transfer station are.
So what I was thinking on the on the front gate would be that it's for particular personnel only. It's not for the public to go through there. Correct?
Well, that one's going to be locked during off hours anyway, like it always has.
All right, and that's a combination.
The back lot, which we've been having people go in at their leisure on during closed time. That's the one that. And we could have a sign on the front, but I nobody's going to be able to get in that way anyway, but. That back one is going to have a sign because there are people that have been in the habit now for quite some time. Using it at their convenience.
Well, I thought it was they had a chain lock or something on it when it wasn't supposed to be open.
There was nothing. There was no gate there, Catherine.
All right.
The gate closing the public works, you know, we had that one. I'm talking one beyond the the storage yard. There used to be one there between that and the transfer station near where the burn pit is.
Okay.
That's that that gate was taken out.
I wasn't thinking about I'm sorry, I wasn't thinking about that one in particular. I was only thinking about signage on the absolute front gate. Which is where Public Works employees go in. That it's only for authorized personnel. In other words, it's not for the public.
We're 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 I've already had Joe and I've had a couple of conversations with staff. That they are not allowed there on those premises unless specifically approved through my office or through Public Works. Because I've had complaints of people that are not on duty using the facility and we've had to put a stop to that.
They have a guy they have a resident comes down and uses the bathroom.
Well, I don't I don't mind them using the bathroom, I guess, but.
I've daily. Okay. Yeah.
Did you say a resident?
Yeah. That's why I mentioned about authorized personnel only.
That door is.
That's okay.
Interesting. We'll have to talk more about that.
Yeah, we will. Okay, good.
The dead tree that was standing there in South Cemetery for three years has finally been taken down. We had a huge tree there that was and it was called to my attention when we had that vandalism back number of months ago. But that has been totally removed. The dead tree that was on Luther's property that fallen off a town property. That has been removed. Last Friday and also very large sister treated that that was dead must have had a. Over it was probably an eight foot circumference that was also removed on Friday. And we're going to be doing a an analysis of some of the other trees on there. I've got to talk to planning and zoning and check the rig because that is a scenic road. And I'm not sure if there's a particular protocol that we're supposed to go through. For removing trees on that road or any scenic road. But I'll get clarification and let everybody know about that.
Good point.
Um, we've got updated COVID tests here. I've got an abundance of them at the selectmen's office. You folks probably read your previous emails on that that the ones that we had here. Had expired and they had three renewals on them. CDC confirmed that they weren't being renewed for a fourth time. The school shared. A number of boxes of their test kits that they didn't need. Now those expire the end of January, so if you know of anybody that needs them, I passed them out at the elderly housing. I gave a good supply to the senior center. I'm going to drop some off at the library, but please spread the word they're there and they should be used. I'm advised that CDC will probably be. Giving an extension on those also, but we haven't heard that officially yet.
One thing I noticed when I went into town offices is that we no longer have masks available for the public if they happen to forget theirs if they choose to put on a mask.
That's a good thought. I stole a couple of boxes. The only ones we have left were. I had given them the social service office and Friday I went in there and stole a couple of boxes for the senior center, so. I'll get we'll get a couple. It's a good idea. There should be boxes down there near the front door.
Thanks.
Melissa still has a few. In case you hadn't heard. December twenty third, the generator blew up at the school.
No, hadn't heard it.
Apparently they've been inking that along for a long time, but it finally gave way. And right now, Mike Melody did make arrangements and we've got a rental up there. That will cover everything that the old one did. But it's quite expensive, so we are researching. Well, we also reported it to Karma. Because we may have some portion of that. They'll probably prorate it on a age basis, but. We've reported it to our insurance carrier. They've done an inspection and we're waiting to hear back from them. My recommendation and our folks up there are getting some prices on a new generator. I think that's going to be the way to go instead of fixing that old one. It's about thirty years.
Bill, how old was the old one?
About thirty years old.
Would Karma even cover that?
Shh, I don't know. We asked.
All right.
We do. I they I'll tell you, I did see and I talked to Mike about it. We have been maintaining that. There are have been new parts. We've got a complete maintenance record of it and we've shared that with Karma, so. I don't think they'll cover a new one, but I think I'm hoping for a portion.
Good.
And stay tuned on that. Our assessor is working on the grant list. It's good to say it. Seems like we're going to have one right on schedule this time. She anticipates being done on either the thirtieth or the thirty first. Which will be within the state requirement. So we don't intend on asking for an extension. Like we've done a few times in the past few years. I will just as a reminder, if you'll remember the last time Lynn came to one of our meetings. We discussed that new veterans exemption, PA twenty four thirty four, section thirty three. And she's had to set everything aside. Except working on this grand list, but she has got a lot of back work on that. Plus, she's got some recommendations. For us to consider about improving the exemptions for all veterans in town. So I'm thinking directly, hopefully sometime in February. Will be bringing before the board so we can consider making a recommendation to the Board of Finance. I I've got a feeling and I I talked to Duncan about it, but haven't heard back from him. I think we'll need a town meeting on that. But so that's in the works and hopefully we'll have something for you in February. Our local thirteen oh three two ninety three of Council Four has put in a demand letter. To open up negotiations. I know Karen has reserved the room downstairs for sometime in February. I don't have a date for you, but I'll keep you posted on that. Or it seems like we just did got through doing that, but year goes by pretty quick. One thing that's not on our agenda and I will probably ask towards the end of our meeting to add it. Would be consideration, discussion and or action on the appointment of a permanent treasurer.
Yes.
And also just an FYI, we have received a letter. From a interested party for the Aging on Commission and I I can do that under new business, but. I'm going to hold off on that until we hear from the Commission on Aging itself. But that's pretty much all I have. Any questions or anything on anything else? Roger, Catherine?
No.
Okay. Item five on the agenda, acceptance of minutes of twelve nineteen twenty two. I believe Catherine, that was one you wanted to take a look at.
I reviewed the minutes. There was one statement in there that looked a little dicey. That's under first selectmen's briefing. It's the last bullet. It says Silver Smith questioned the role played by Ashford's tree warden. It was actually in determining which trees are a danger or can affect power.
Yes, and and I I had.
For clarification.
I had talked to our tree warden about things in general. In fact, I talked to him about that tree that we the two trees we had taken down on Varga earlier. And he cited the statue and that that it's within the first selectmen's authority to make that determination. I have been. Trying to let him know and we certainly copied him on the email we got from EverSource. Was Asplin and their mapping that was available here. But it is within the authority of its office to authorize those if it's. In a potential impeding public safety like electrical wires.
So Bill, for the tree warden. Is that part of the tree warden's role is to look at, you know, diseased trees that are a danger?
It can be in the big picture. I have never seen a report to that effect. I'd like to. You know, we do a lot of word of mouth and we we as a result of making appeal to the public. We got a lot of public introspective and it comes to find out EverSource has acknowledged a number of trees. And gone ahead if the tenant if the residents hadn't called it to our attention, probably wouldn't have come down, so. It's a good thought. I can talk to Mr. Cam for you a little more.
Well, actually, mine mine was just in response to the. Proving the minutes. So again, my adjustment to those minutes would be that Silver Smith questioned the role played by the Ashford tree. Ashford's tree warden in determining which trees are a danger or can affect power.
Okay, you like that added?
Yes, please.
Okay.
And I'll make a motion. My motion is my motion to approve those minutes with that adjustment.
Okay, is there a second? Is there any more discussion? Chris, have you got that?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor, saying if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes of January tenth twenty three.
So moved.
We have a motion on the floor. Are there any additions, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, saying if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Item six, hear from boards, commissions and committees. I don't see anybody. Hear from boards, committees. Hear from boards and committees, okay? Ashridge School Tank Replacement Project. I sent you folks a copy of the latest invoice. That we received. I got clarification and there is no contract. That's being issued. I did let Town Council take a look at it. He said it looked in order. I've issued a P O and. And I think Roger's going to be signing that today. He's here. And sent them our tax number because the tax was shown on that and obviously we're exempted from that. And we're looking. Tentatively at a date of of delivery of the third or fourth week in June, which is. Exactly what the school had told me would be the best time to get it delivered there, so.
That's very good. I saw the email asking for Rogers and my approval. And rather than doing it outside of a meeting, I'm just letting you know I approve.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Item D, status of the after school children program is proposed by the Recreation Commission.
You skipped the roof project.
Oh.
It's A.
I did. Item B, Ashford Advisory School Building Committee. They have not had.
Wait, you we haven't done the Ashford School Roof Project.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm way ahead of myself.
Yeah.
Holy smokes.
Damn, Bill, you're ahead of your time.
Moving along too fast. Item seven, the Ashford School Roof Project Review RFP responses for a financial advisor. We received one response. That was sent to both you and Roger. And. I also had Duncan take a look at it. He had no objections to it seemed in order.
So.
So I would enter enter take a motion.
I'll make a motion for the purpose of discussion.
Okay.
Motion to approve it.
We have a motion on the floor. It's been a second. Go ahead, Catherine.
Okay, um, I wasn't clear based upon their write up. As to exactly which. Fees. They anticipate charging us. It's like for what exactly? They have a fee schedule that shows multiple things.
Yeah, my understanding, I did ask that question. You're referring to page fifteen?
Yeah, trying to get to it. Yes.
Transaction type? I understand that as I've explained to me and I also ran this by Judith. The first item is what we would be talking about. Competitive money bond, the fifteen thousand.
And that's it. Now, I did notice that down further on it had. On that same page, transaction type, it had disclosure filings. And does that come into play in this? That's non debt issuance, so maybe not.
I did not get the impression that it did, Catherine.
Okay, and then when we go to additional information on the next page. This is what they would be doing for us for the fifteen thousand?
Correct.
Okay. And then so what they would do is put together a contract for us that indicates this or is this? How would that work? I would I would assume it's some kind of a contract.
I I would assume I don't see any signature page or anything on this. I would assume.
Right.
Once we give them the acknowledgement that they'll send us a contract. And I'd want to send that. Well, I'd send it to you folks too, but I'd I'd want to submit that to Duncan to take a look at it. I. I do that as a normal practice on anything I'm signing regarding a contract, that sort of thing.
All right. So I guess what we can can expect. Is that this is probably going to take two or three months. Is that correct? Or do we have a timetable for ourselves?
Well, we're looking to do. And that's that's on our agenda, to set a town meeting. To approve the five million dollar bonding. My understanding that the town approval will trigger the the whole process as then it goes forward.
Okay.
Now, in layman's terms, Catherine, and you know, I did this thirty years ago and was involved in a couple of bonding programs, but. So I'm obviously a little rusty on it and it's it's new grounds for a lot of us. Or new re grounds for us. The advice that I originally got from Bond Council. And then I also conferred with our town council, I conferred. With Jim Rupert and a couple of other towns that did more recent bonding than we had. This is a typical process for a financial director. Advisor, excuse me. To actually market our bonding. And they put it in such a way in an attractive way. And I think it's going to be helpful for us. I think for us as a tool for our future bond reviews with Moody's or whoever else. To have this sort of thing in file. He will highlight all the benefits of why we are a preferred seller. And I've been assured by by our bond council and I have a great deal of respect. She's handled as many bonds for us as I can remember. That this will more than pay for itself.
And I'm glad I'm glad to hear that. One of the things on here is on page nineteen. It said, and I'm glad they caught this, we know that the town retains a Moody's rating of AA three. After review, after reviewing the town's credit factors. They believe a potential move to an S and P global rating could bring about a rating upgrade and it looks like they've done that in some other towns.
That's correct.
And could bring us up to an AA plus. If that were the case, then when marketing our bonds, if they can do that ahead of that. Or marketing our bond, then we would be more attractive.
Correct, correct, and not only for this bond, but for potential future bonds, which. We all know that there's a wish list up in the school that we're probably going to be addressing that in the relatively near future.
So that's something I would like them, you know, to pursue as quickly as they can.
Yep.
Because I think that could end up being a factor. I'm not sure how long it takes to get your rating upgraded.
I think that's like the horse in this thing. The horse comes first. I think that's what they do first is do an overall analysis. Of our financial status in town, which is excellent. And that's that's why they feel strongly that they'll be able to increase.
Good. All right, that's all I had.
Any more discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion on the floor to hire Mark Chapman. And his firm as our financial advisor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Bear with me. Financial advisor for this bonding.
Yeah.
Issue. Right? Friendly amendment.
I'll take that as a friendly amendment.
Yes, and for the cost of fifteen thousand dollars.
Correct.
All right. Aye.
Roger, you say aye unanimous?
Hi, Sherri.
Hi, Sherri. Okay, moving on here, I'll try to. Review RFP, we did that. Set date for public hearing, town special town meeting. For bond authorization. We are. Looking at a date and and we cleared it with Sherri Much today. I think Sherri's with us. And the recommendation that we are making. Is a town meeting to be authorized for February eleventh, which is a Saturday. And I would suggest doing it at ten in the morning. And I also had a meeting today regarding these issues and the roof project in general with Cindy Ford. Marion Matthews was there. Mark. I forget his last name.
Robbins.
That was Robbins. And Jim Rupert. And. We went over the process and timing. And we felt that that was the best time. This way we could make the citizen. And get proper advertising. Cindy is going to be doing a email blast. At least once and probably more than that, reminding. Parents and that because Jim thinks it's important, as I do. To get a high number of attendees at the meeting. And it would be done in person and also Cindy tells me that the cafeteria can be set up and also be done. Virtually. Now, the one thing I want.
I guess I would I would guess I'm wondering why we think there's going to be more attendees on a Saturday when families are doing things with their kids.
I've been kind of outvoted on that.
Who outvoted you?
Well, I shouldn't. We did. We did not take a vote. But but.
I believe our board votes.
The general consensus of those I was speaking to felt. That people would be let would be more app. Particularly because they have a special interest in the school to send to attend a Saturday meeting. The one thing that that regardless of we do it at the school or where we decide to do it. As you know, Wellington kind of changed. The way they're doing town meetings. They they were doing their town meetings. Both voting both in person and virtually. And they found that. The virtual part of the meeting was very cumbersome and problematic. So now you can attend virtually, but you can only vote if you're in person. And I don't know how this board feels about that. I I throw that out to you.
I mean, I saw how much work it was for that last meeting we had, just kind of keeping track of. Who was, you know. Was a lot.
Yeah. Yeah, it was very difficult and it now I'm assuming this is just going to involve one, maybe two votes. But it is still particularly burdensome on our town clerk. To manipulate that. I I could go either way with it.
I, you know, let me just give the other point of view, which is you're telling people they can watch. They can say something, but they can't vote.
Right. And you'd have to make that clear in the call of the meeting. And if they wanted to come down, that they'd be able to vote.
I think that kind of disenfranchises some people. Particularly people who are concerned about getting COVID. Because we, you know, we're back up there. We're not in a good place again.
Well, that's a good point, Catherine.
And I hate to set that. I hate to set that precedent. That means it would happen probably for all town meetings.
Well, I think particularly with the COVID point. Perhaps we had to take it on a case by case basis and play it by ear. This will certainly be. A try at how if if in fact we do attract a lot more people at the town meeting. It will certainly be a challenge and we can make an evaluation of that after that.
Sherri Sherri's still on. Sherri's still on. Can.
Hi, Sherri.
I just wanted to ask Sherri.
I didn't want to interrupt.
No, but you know, this hit you. And are there ways that we can make it less cumbersome? Whether it's cutoffs of people, you know, in terms of when they join the meeting, so you don't always have a rolling target.
I have to say that if it's going to be a large meeting.
Yes.
And it sounds like this might be one. It will be a nightmare. It will be hard. I'm I have I don't whine about it. It's not that it's so much work for me and I can't stand it. It's just that people aren't very good at being patient. And in order to. Get the motions right and stick to agendas. And to make sure everything is done properly. We, the people running the meeting, so probably you, Bill, if you're moderator, have to be extremely careful. That we don't get pushed along by people who are trying to get out of there quickly or whatever. So that you need to take that time to make sure that whoever is in charge of counting the votes. Virtually. That they have time to do that correct properly, you know, and then and then numbers are totaled in the room. It's it's not something I I've definitely had the feeling that. The meetings that I have been part of where we had more than like two people virtually were really difficult. To count the votes and feel confident. And then, you know, people, they always want to make sure things are done right. Well. And then, you know, people, they always want to make sure things are done right. Well, you can't guarantee that unless they give you the time. So it, what it does is it, it just, it really imposes upon you that you would have to, as moderator, say, keep, keep them moving very orderly and, and stop them if things aren't happening, you know, almost if we had like a hand signal like, you know, stop or something because yeah, they, they have their own agenda and they just want to move, move, move. And we have to be really careful that, 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 that. So if we, if we do it that way, we've got to take the time. And if we know it's going to be a big meeting, I'll have to have help there. It's, it's very difficult, like for Christine to take minutes and be trying to run the laptop. And it's the same thing for the person who, the town clerk who's trying to count the votes. You know, I, I can't do that either. So it's like, you kind of need a little panel of people, you know, running things at, at the table.
And this isn't only registered voters, right? It's off the
Because it's money. So it, yeah, a money thing. Yep. So it'd be anybody in, in the, the
Have, have you had the opportunity, Sherry, to talk to the Wellington Town Clerk or anything on, on how their meetings are going? I haven't.
My understanding from Mike D'Amato, because they had town meetings having to do with planning and zoning stuff lately that was really hot, very hot material. So there were lots of people. And that's why they chose to to go this route because it became
You mean only voting in person?
Correct, correct. When Erica chose to do that, in talking to Robyn, the town clerk in Wellington, it was a godsend. The, and you know, I I don't think, for the, well, yes, um, definitely less painful. But, you know, it's, it's, it's up to you guys. I'm definitely willing to do it. If we know it's going to be a big turnout, get the help. And if you can just, if whoever is moderator, they just need to keep everybody moving at the proper pace and make sure things are done right.
Is to do everything we can to get at a big turnout.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sure. Of course.
Normally on, on, on a high ticket item like this, obviously, historically, we've always gone to referendum. But because of the time situations and everything, it's, that's why we're trying to pick up as much time as we can to get this going. So that was the rationale. John, is that John or Mike with us tonight? Tysh. Hi. Have you heard anything from How It Goes in Wellington with their setup with their town meetings now?
With the, with the hybrid?
Yeah, well, with the hybrid, but where the people that are virtual, not voting.
Oh, I, I don't. I'm sorry. I could, I could, I could message Mike to get some information about that.
Just, just curious.
Yeah, no, sorry.
So anyway.
I wondered if any other towns are doing it that way.
I don't know.
I, I think when they do, when you do a waiting room, I think you can have people register with their name and address. And so as you let them in, you can kind of vet those things. But it's not, it's not perfect. But I mean, similar to, you know, someone can claim they're from, somebody could walk into a, 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 a physical town meeting and claim they're from town. And you have to, you know, do some follow up on that, but
Yeah.
Well, the way we think, the way we follow up on that is looking at the what is it? The property R list or the voter list?
The voter record. So you're looking at the list first, then you look at the tax books. But if you don't know the person, you would be asking to see their ID. And it's a little tricky because if they're virtual, they have to hold their ID up to the screen and then everybody can see it. So that's why it's a little
So Sherry, if it were, if we're only the people in the room were voting, you would be asking them for their IDs?
If I didn't know them, that's why I like to have Lauren help me because when she helps me, she knows most of the people I would not know. And, but yeah, I would ask for IDs if I, if we could not identify them.
And as I recall.
I wish I had, I wish I had had a little more time to, to think about the, the dynamics for this. I guess I know we need to make a decision tonight, correct? Bill?
Well, I would think, when, when are you going to print on, on the citizen?
At the very, very latest, I'll be giving it to them, I want to say next Tuesday. So you, you do have some time. If you, we need to know the date, but as far as, and I know Christine needs to give.
On the date, if I I'm thinking, I think our, our dilemma is, is, is the voting scenario.
Right, so.
There would have to be something that says only those present in the room, for example. It would be only those present in the room will be allowed to vote.
That is correct. So.
I'd like to take a look at the language on their legal notices that Wellington does. We could always call a special meeting.
We have a meeting on Tuesday.
Yeah, but she's going to have to need it before then.
Well.
We have a Tuesday morning, if that's of any help.
That is help. Yes, that would be fine.
It would be fine.
Yes.
Because I was going to say, we could call a special meeting for this coming Friday. Notice it tomorrow.
No, Tues- Tuesday's okay, Bill, honestly.
Is it?
Yes, it is. Absolutely. Yep.
Okay, so Bill, that, so it would be good if we could find out, you know, what the, how they noticed them in Wellington. And just a quick check. Maybe with our town council to make sure that we're not doing something that's disenfranchising, you know, that is really not appropriate. You know, to make it limited.
Two questions here. Is, there's a legal question. I seemed to me that I had somebody complain to me after our first meeting when we tried to do a, a hybrid. Because they were asked to show their ID and they didn't like the idea of showing that on a screen. Actually with everybody being able to see it. So let me do a little research on it. I think we made some good points here today.
Yeah.
Why can, can we at least settle on the date and the time and then we'll
Sure.
We'll figure the rest out. So there's a motion on the floor for the eleventh at ten AM at the school.
Yeah, we'll see how many come.
Probably be four people there. Uh, no, I'm, I'm being facetious now. Any more discussion? So the, the caveat to this is that we will decide on the method of voting at our next Tuesday meeting.
Right.
In agreement? Okay.
Yes.
All right. All in favor of the motion on the floor, signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you, folks. Appreciate you.
Nobody actually made a motion.
I thought I did for the purpose of discussion.
I thought we did make a motion.
For purposes that was about the roof project and the financial advisor.
All right. Do you want to make the motion, Catherine?
This is for the public hearing. Okay.
A public hearing to adjourn to a, a special town meeting.
Yes, a public hearing for the date of February, I think you said eleventh.
Yes.
At, at ten AM.
Correct.
To adjourn to a special town meeting. And we have to say, to immediately, we have to say, we have to say to immediately adjourn to a special town meeting so people know it's happening right then.
Correct. To vote.
And this is, and this is, and this is for bond authorization.
Correct. Five million dollars.
Right. And that's an aye.
Aye, 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 unanimous. Thank you very much. And I'll, I'll get as much information as I can. I think it's a good point. See if there's anybody else other than Sherry. I don't know if you've got anybody you could call. See if there are any other towns that are and the method they're doing it on a large type media. I don't know how Wyndham is doing. I can call Jim over there.
Yeah, I was just looking at, trying to find Wellington's website to, to see how they did it, but it's too difficult to do on a phone, so. But yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll ask around.
Okay.
So now it's the Ashford Advisory School Building Committee. It's our next one.
And I don't know, it could cover under A or B, but I had a meeting today with Jim Rupert, Cindy Ford, the fellow from the solar panels. Mark, was it Mark Robbins, is it?
Yes.
And Marion Matthews. And of course, Marion was very anxious to get this going and so was Mark. And we had a long labor discussion about it. Because apparently Marion had also been discussing with Mark about new windows, new air conditioning. Obviously, what come with that would be ADA upgrades and, and whatever abatements that wouldn't be needed as a result of any of that remediation. And it was explained by Jim that this was always anticipated by the building committee and discussed with everybody to be the phase. And the first phase is to get the roof done.
Right.
Following that, the solar panels. Once the roof is, is done and engineered, then the solar panels would come thereafter. Now, as I'm advised, there's no dollar outlay by the town for the solar panels because of, because of energy credits that we'd be receiving. It, it looks like just because of timing and the way it's going, we're going to lose a year of energy credits, which equates to about forty thousand dollars. Marion, of course, wanted to get this done this summer. And of course, we do have the tank project going on. That's going to start at the end of June. I was going to start before then with some preparation, but but the mechanics of its design of the roof, the ordering of materials, all of the engineering, the load bearing testing, it's going to have to be done extensively. In all reality, this is going to be a summer of two thousand twenty five project. Excuse me. Summer of two thousand twenty four project.
And, and even that, I mean, that is not a bad timetable for an, an effort of this size. And it'll be interesting because of problems we've had getting materials for other things. Hopefully, that will not be as big an issue by the time we get to actually working on this.
Well, one of the things I asked Mark Robbins about, because I brought up about, you know, the, the supply chain issues that we're running into with every project we're looking at. We're trying to get accomplished right now. And there were specific guidelines that Eversource is enforcing as to when we have to get this done and the penalties. And I asked them, based on the COVID situation, particularly the president has now declared a new COVID emergency extension. And the supply chain problems, is there room for an appeal? And he said he thought there was room for a six month appeal, that the impression he's going to look in to see if there's any more of an appeal. But you know, this is as serious and as costly a project that we're going to be facing in a long, long time. And
Right.
I don't think there's any way we're going to get it done any sooner than the summer of twenty four. And these other things, according to what Jim said, the roof is going to have to come first, the solar panels second, and then we're going to have to phase in what the other things are and what the cost there. I, just, just by the magnitude of what we're talking, we could probably easily double the bond issue that we're considering right now.
The, I think also, if I understand correctly, the design of the roof and the materials and everything will work well with what we're planning for solar. In other words, it's, that's being taken into account when we're talking about how this roof is going to be built. Is that it's intended to support the solar that we're bringing in?
Absolutely. I mean, one depends on the other.
Right.
And, and Jim had some, Jim's got a, a great deal of knowledge regarding this subject. And I know some of the things I've had people come into the office complaining about solar, solar on the roof and different things like that. And Jim's got a whole list of why it makes sense to do the panels on the roof, including extending the warranties on the roof. Apparently, the new systems that they're doing with the solar panels actually lend itself to these companies extending the lifetime of the roofs. And I never realized that. I thought it would be the reverse of that, to be honest with you. So anyway, that's where we are. That was basically, we're going ahead, expedite this bonding, expedite scheduling, design, engineering, and then of course, doing the construction plans on the roof. And, and I've already told you what the timeline is anticipated. Everything, everybody seemed that they understood that at this time to go forward with any other projects just doesn't make any sense. So.
Yeah, and things, and, and, you know, Ms. Matthews bringing up things like, you know, electric buses and things like that. They're not part of this. So that's really capital improvements. So.
I agree. All right, the Ashford School Tank Replacement, I think I already touched on.
No. Yeah, okay. I'm sorry. I thought you were jumping one.
No, we've done that already. Item D, Status of the After School Children Program. Is Sherry York with us? I didn't, I thought I saw her come in.
No.
I didn't. We had briefly discussed this in our last meeting. And we still are status quo. We've got two applications in. We've got promises of two others come in. I hate to keep doing this. I think you both know, I'd like to get going on this one way or another, but I, I think it just makes sense to carry that up to our next agenda for further discussion at this time.
Agreed.
John?
I'm sorry, this is, this is a previous item, but while you were talking about the roof, I was messaging with Mike D'Amato about how Wellington manages virtual or hybrid town meetings.
Yeah.
The answer is they don't. Because of the difficulty of verifying electors or legitimate residents in a virtual environment, Wellington has just been holding town meetings in person solely at this point.
And it's not virtual?
It's not virtual. Or that not, not voting, you know, they'll, they'll hold like municipal information meetings, but if a town meeting vote is needed, it's in person at this point.
So if I recall, I watched some of the planning and zoning special meetings that they had about allowing a group to come in and build off of what Route thirty two, I think it is, a, a big area. And so they had at least three nights of meetings. And so, you know, my husband and I sat in on those, at least virtually. But what we saw was they were held in what, a gymnasium? Because they had a lot of people there. They were on benches, that kind of thing, which was a more of an open air kind of environment than a bunch of people sitting in a room. Their conference room, which I, I don't think their conference room is very big, is it?
No, no, no. They had to, yeah, they had to have this in a, in a, in a different place.
So their, their town meetings were held in a different place is what I'm hearing.
Correct. And, and, but, but you know, the, the Planning and Zoning Commission is not a town meeting, as you know, it's
No, no, I know, I know that, but they had, you know, large meetings that way.
Correct, right. They needed to move it to one of the schools.
Yeah. So when we talk about having this meeting at the school, that is a larger area. So you know, something to keep in mind. All right. Thank you for the information.
So just so I understand right, John, so they do do them virtual, but the people who are looking in virtual do not vote? Or they just do it in
Any voting has to happen in person.
Voting, but are people allowed to watch virtually?
I think if it's being held and if it's being held in a, in a, in a place where that technology is available, yes.
Okay.
But yeah, again, with the understanding that, that voting has to be in person.
Okay. Thank you, John. Appreciate it. What's the board's pleasure regarding the after school program?
I'm, I'm sorry?
What is, what is the pleasure of the board regarding the after school program? Do you want to put it on the next agenda for our next meeting?
Absolutely.
Yeah, we're having conversations about the job descriptions and what have you. I have not found that packet yet.
Okay.
And I want to look at that.
Okay.
Yes.
I believe, I believe I believe, I believe Chris reset that.
Okay, I'll, I'll go back.
We'll double check that. Okay, new business, board and committee appointments, recreation commission. Sherry, I think that's part of why Sherry much here to give us guidance.
I sure like to have, I'd sure like to have Sherry had written something up. And just to give kind of a synopsis so that anybody from the public who is listening will understand what the issues are with this, because this is not the first time we've encountered this kind of a problem with the board. Where someone has not given their letter of resignation properly. People are getting appointed to the board, but they are supposed to be appointed by the Board of Selectmen, but the board is appointing them themselves, and they don't seem to realize that that's not how it works. So.
Well, I, I, I appreciate Sherry Much's email this afternoon, and I thought you brought a lot of clarity to it.
She did.
Why don't you just give us a brief outline of what your recommendation is?
Okay. Well, yes.
Well, what the prob, what the problem is and what the recommendation is.
Okay, so I'd like to review the current status of the membership of the Park and Recreation Commission. There, we have had some issues with them. There have been vacancies for a while that have been problematic. Be, and this has happened on other boards and commissions where we need to have hard copy resignation letters from people when they are resigning. The hard copies must be signed by the individual. So this means an email isn't gonna cut it. Okay, and I have researched this recently, and some towns do it where all board commission members, whether they're elected or appointed, those letters go to the town clerk. There are other towns who, they split it up. So if you are an elected official, you resign to the town clerk, and if you are appointed by whomever, and usually it's the Board of Selectmen, you resign to them. But in any case, it's sort of like producing that driver's license and for verification purposes, so that somebody doesn't basically resign for you, and you didn't know about it. It has to be a hard copy with your signature. So, keeping all that in mind, the current situation is that there is one vacancy. There are one, two, three, four, five regular member seats on Park and Rec. There is one vacancy that has been vacant for a while. There are three alternate seats. And a, a certain individual, should I name her? Is that?
Yes.
Okay, so Elena Philippi is her name. Apparently, she's an alternate. She has not been able to come to a lot of meetings, and she sent an email to Sherry York resigning. I believe it was maybe.
She said September?
Yeah, it was, it was in the fall. And when we saw this in the minutes in our office, I informed Sherry that that wasn't adequate, that she needed to submit the written letter signed, what signature. And she has stated in an email that I mentioned in the email I sent to all of you that she had how, I'm gonna say hounded, she had requested three times the, the written resignation letter and has not received it. So I did tell her a while, I did tell Sherry York, she did not act upon this, but I looked at the ordinance, and the ordinance for the Ashford Park and Rec does allow incredibly, because nobody else has this that I can think of, but any member of said commission may be removed by the majority vote of the commission members.
So that's one way to do it.
Yeah, so whether or not we have a clear resignation from her, in their minutes of the November fourteenth meeting that Rec had, they did indicate through a motion to accept her resignation. So I guess if you look at that, you can extend that to say that they have indicated they, her removal, they would like her removed because they accepted that. So I think we can start there and say that now we have a vacancy where her seat was as an alternate. Alrighty, so we have that one vacancy for Sandy Mokewen. And they voted also, and I have, in, in the email I sent you this afternoon, I guess I'll read this so everybody understands who's watching, that Neil Gordon motioned to accept Elena Philippi's resignation from the commission and accept Andrew Doring as a member of the commission and accept Dave Roston and Amanda Holden as alternates on the commission. And the motion was seconded by Leslie Bazile, and the motion passed unanimously. Most of that's okay.
No.
They accepted her resignation. Okay, if we're gonna say that that's the equivalent of them removing her, okay. Andrew is already an alternate. So their intention was when they said they wanted him as a member, he already is a member. They didn't make it clear there, but they were trying to elevate him. He is, as an alternate, he can be elevated to fill the full member vacancy of Sandy Mokewen. So that tracks, that's okay.
I have a question about that.
Okay.
I thought that the selectmen are the ones who appoint people to that commission.
And that's where the second part of my email comes in, the ordinance.
Well, I, I don't see them being able to move Andrew up to a full member without.
Yeah. So what they're supposed to be doing is recommending to you what they do.
Exactly.
What they, what they want to see happen. So let me, let me finish, and then I'll tell you, you're, you're on the right track with that, but I don't know how fast you want to clean this up. And they also wanted to accept Dave Roston. Well, Dave's already on there. I think she might have forgotten that, or somebody forgot. Dave's already on as an alternate. So he didn't need to be, they didn't need to do anything. He's already there. Amanda Holden, for them to make a motion and accept it for her to be an alternate on the commission, that would be okay, because we, now we know Elena Philippi has resigned, so there's one vacancy. If Andrew is moved up, which is the first thing that should, should have happened, okay, then there's another vacancy. But when you look at the two, you definitely would fill the first vacancy first. So that puts her into Elena Philippi's slot. Okay?
So.
So what, what we.
The concern that I, I, the concern I have is all they needed to do was lay this out, that this is what they would like, and provide that to the Board of Selectmen so that we could address it. They cannot do that on their own.
I was told by Sherry York, and you three can tell me whether this was true or not. She told me that she informed the Board of Selectmen of their wishes, what they wanted. In other words, the recommendation.
In writing, in writing?
Well, we have a theory in our office that she thinks that when they have something in minutes, this is all we can come up with, because nothing else makes sense, that she thinks that you read their minutes, and then you know what they have said and what they're doing. Because when she tells us that she has told the Board of Selectmen, we say, okay, she's told the Board of Selectmen. And the only thing that we can find is that it's in the minutes. So were you, were you told that, that they're, Bill, were you told that their desire was to do the, these things?
And anytime I'm told that someone has a desire regarding anything like this, I insisted it be put in writing.
So you don't have an email that I'm not aware of?
And if it's a, if it's a resignation, just because I have been understanding, like I think all of us have had, that had to be made to you or your office, not to us. I mean, I do that kind of universally. I do not remember seeing anything in writing from them indicating what we're considering here tonight.
Okay.
In that order.
So therefore, based on what you were saying right now, the recommendations that I made in my, my, the email I sent you today, my, and I will read those, my recommendations were that the Board of Selectmen approved the recommendation of the APRC to elevate Andrew Doring from alternate to regular member to fill the vacancy left by Sandra Mokewen, term to be April first, twenty twenty-one, to April first, twenty twenty-six. The second recommendation I made was that the Board of Selectmen approved the recommendation of the APRC to appoint Amanda Holden as an alternate to fill the vacancy left by Elena Philippi, term to be April first, twenty twenty-one, to April first, twenty twenty-four. Okay, if the Board of Selectmen has not truly received the recommendation from the Ashford Parks and Rec Commission, then they have not done their part that is required in the ordinance. Okay. As Catherine has pointed out, so vacancies on said commission shall be filled by approval from the Board of Selectmen for any unexpired terms. So if you have not been informed at this point, my recommendation would be that you formally, however you want to do it, request from, I suppose it's gonna be the director, because they don't have a chairman, that from the Director of the Ashford Parks and Recreation Commission, what, in writing, what their recommendation would be to fill those positions.
That makes sense.
If you feel that that's something you want to see, Bill, Roger, and Catherine.
I, and I want to see them have a chairman and start following all the protocols that we insist everybody else follows.
Absolutely. The, this has been an issue for some time. And, you know, one of the things too is that apparently Elena Philippi has been, oh, not Elena, Amanda Holden has been working with them since September and acting as a secretary, and she's not even on the commission.
That is correct. She has been acting as secretary, and she has been making motions, and she has been voting. And when I, yeah, called it to Sherry's attention, Sherry York's attention, that those things could not happen, and if any motions had been made by that person who was not actually seated on the board at all, that they would not be valid. She said, I'm not going to tell her that. She has been active coming to the meetings, and she's, she's really valuable, and if, yeah, she's basically saying semantic semantics, and.
You know, Sherry, Sherry York does not grasp some of the, I'm gonna say, kind of the legalities around what the board is able to do and not able to do, and that's unfortunate. Bill?
I, I'm gonna ask.
I'm at the point that if that Recreation Commission cannot find a chairman, that it gets dissolved. We cannot have this thing with people who aren't even on the board, making motions, everybody voting on it, and thinking that's fine.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm going to suggest that we curtail further discussion, carry this over to our next meeting, and ask Sherry to, to be in attendance. In the interim, I'm going to relay what we expect her to do as far as putting all of this in writing and go over there with her. I, I, I agree with what you're saying, Catherine. It, it, we, we've been more than patient, and this has been going on an awfully long time.
I know when I was.
Couple of years, probably.
Just like with you, when I was first selectman, I was literally trying to find a chairman for that board.
Yep.
You know, someone to come on who has some organizational skills.
Well, we've just got to bring them within, you know, somebody that has the ability to organize it, to fall within the FOI regulations that we hold everybody else to.
Exactly, exactly.
So I, I would suggest we don't take any action. I will have a talk with Sherry tomorrow and ask her to specifically attend our next meeting, and before that meeting, to submit to us in writing what their intention is.
What were you gonna say, Sherry?
I just wanted to, as a final thing, just point out that because we are right now doing budgets, I did send an email to her, and I copied Bill into it last week. So he would be aware of this, that.
We've received the copy, by the way.
Okay, yeah, so any motions about the budget or even the meeting itself, if it depended on a quorum, she had to have at least three people, because she, she has five members, so she needed three people who were seated and genuine members, and that she, she just, she, she needs, I wanted to make sure she knew, because I did not want to get any more minutes saying such and such happened, our budget's been passed, when she blew away all the rules. So just, if you can call to her attention that it's really, it's critical, this is critical right now because of the budget, that she doing right.
So, you know, and I've had these, I had these conversations with her.
Okay.
That's all.
Before.
Okay.
All right, moving on. Agricultural Committee, I have no recommendations. Conservation Commission, I have no recommendations. Economic Development, two vacancies, no recommendations at this time. Commission on Aging, I did get a letter of interest of serving. He meets the political requirements of filling that seat, but what I'm gonna do is ask for a letter from the Commission on Aging with the recommendation, which is par for the course of what we normally do. Inland Wetland and Water Course Commissions, no recommendations at this time. And the Zoning Board of Appeals, same thing. Now, we have done a comprehensive list of not only these, but a number of other vacancies. And that will be included in the upcoming Citizen.
Great.
I don't know if, if you guys were sent a copy of that list, but it's rather extensive. But that will be going in, in the next edition of the Citizen.
It would be nice to, it would actually be nice to let the Chair of the Republican Town Committee and the Chair of the Democratic Town Committee get those lists as well.
Yep. All right, any tax refunds, Chris?
No.
Okay, twenty-three, twenty-four budget status report. Sherry, I met with Sherry Susie on Friday, and the, most of the budgets are in. She's gonna be giving me a list of what went out and what's not in, and we'll try to pull a little push, but is it safe to say, Sherry, you've got the majority of the budgets in, or?
Yes, for the people that I sent out to, I know there's a possibility that I am missing some information that's supposed to go out to certain people, but not knowing everybody yet. In fact, I was just going through my email right now, and so I just sending out a few more budgets that I had sent originally, and I'm not sure you know, why they didn't receive them, so I'm just forwarding that information to those few people again.
Yeah, co, copy me on those, and if I can get a copy of that list, I'll assist with that, but.
Yep.
So it is in process. I did get a request from the Chairman of the Board of Finance for those submittals in writing to them in hard copy, and I told her that we are working on that as we speak. So that is in process.
Yes, because I, I believe that I sent an email out, what was it, yesterday? I think it was yesterday or the day before, that listed everybody that I didn't, had not received a budget from, and I know I had gotten one from a new person for EDC, because apparently who I had sent it to is no longer on the board or part of the board. So you had given me the new info, so I just sent that to Margaret and I copied you on that.
Okay.
And the other one is James, supposedly the Sexton for Cemetery. So I had sent things out to him originally, so I'm going back through my original email and I'm just going to, uh, copy that.
Jim is a little hard to get a hold of, so I may have to assist you on that one.
With that?
Jim is a little difficult to get a hold of at times.
You know, uh, and what I figured, for the, for the time being, I mean, we can always just plug in last year's numbers too, just to get and I, you know, put something in and go forward with, um, you know, and, and if you know that there's one that, you know, oh, so and so should have received this, that I didn't send it to, that, you know, you'll let me know.
I hear you, good idea. Any other questions on twenty-three, twenty-four budget? All right, um, Item D, method of conducting future selectmen's meetings. Um, we did have a, a discussion with Mike Tomato, if we so elect to go with teams meetings for our, uh, daytime meetings, and they are recordable. Um, the one thing that I'm not clear on, and I'll have more discussion with him, is just how we archive those and make sure that they become available to the public and, uh, we'll go with that protocol.
Exactly, and they should be archived right where the, uh, other meetings are being archived.
Yep. That I'm not clear, but I'm, I'm told that we do have the method on that. Um, I did say that I'd like to add a, an agenda item.
Yeah, the appointment of permanent treasurer.
And or action of, uh, discussion of the, uh, treasurer's position.
Uh, so is the motion?
Sherry was kind enough to join us here.
Is the motion?
Well, Chris told me.
Motion, Bill. But, Bill, is the motion to take action on the appointment of permanent treasurer?
Discuss and or act, yes.
Discuss and or act. Okay. Uh, okay. I'll make that motion.
Um, is there a second? All right, all in favor of that motion, adding that to the agenda, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, Sherry, because this is somewhat of a personnel issue, I believe you can elect for us to go into executive session. Um, it's your choice.
Uh, nah, I'm fine, you can discuss.
You're comfortable in a.
Yeah.
Public environment, okay.
Yeah.
Um, just for the board's information, I have had, uh, a couple of discussions with Sherry. Um, and I know we briefly discussed this, uh, at our last meeting. Um, Sherry would like to remain, uh, with the town in a permanent position under the same terms and conditions, um, as she's serving as our interim at, at present. And, um, God bless you. And, um, I support that, I think, uh, you know, we're, because of the limited time that Sherry's, um, putting in at this time, it's taken a little longer to get to know all the players and, and, uh, the unique styles and, and, and some of the way Ashford handles things as compared to some of the other towns. But, um, I'm very, I'm satisfied with her, uh, her performance and, um, um, Sherry's here, if you'd like to ask her any questions or whatever, but again, what I discussed with her is, um, bringing it forward as to making her a permanent treasurer under the terms and conditions that she's presently serving. Um, also in a, in a, in abeyance with our personnel policies that presently.
So, so Bill, um, to make a motion like that, um, well, one thing, I think that the term for a treasurer is two years, is that correct? Because we had to re-up before, um, with our previous treasurer. Um, so that's one thing. The other thing is, um, I don't think the motion should say the same terms and conditions as she's been serving under as a temporary, it should say what the actual terms and conditions are for the motion.
Okay, well, Sherry comes in and works on Friday, just to go over, she comes in and.
So it's one day a week, one day a week.
She does have authorizations up to, and I don't remember how many hours, if the demand necessitated it, she's got a computer that we allowed her to work from home. Um, Chris, do you have that written down on, on how many hours?
It's eighteen.
Was it eighteen?
I think it's eighteen right now.
This one, one day a week.
And up to eighteen hours.
Up to eighteen hours.
Yep, at a rate of twenty-eight dollars an hour.
Twenty-eight, is that correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Uh, and the term, her term would be from when to when?
I would say it's coterminous with the term that we reappointed Cheryl.
I don't know what that is.
Sherry much with this?
Bill, I'm here.
Do you know when the term expires with, uh, Cheryl Baker?
Yes, I do, as a matter of fact, let's see.
June thirtieth of twenty-three.
Did you? Okay.
Twenty twenty-three. Okay. Um.
Yes, that is correct, thank you, Christine.
You're welcome.
So is what we want to do is really take it to there and so we just get back on track?
I think so, we fall, we fall back into the normal sched- scheduler routine.
All right, so, so is this from today or from, we start?
It's from December twenty-eighth.
December twenty-eighth.
I believe that was the ninety-day expiration.
Oh, okay. That was some, two, two, to June thirtieth. Okay, so, um, if I got it straight, is, uh, you're in the office, I'm going to say in the office, one day a week.
Yep.
And with, and I, actually I don't even care about that part, it's that, uh, it's, uh, up to eighteen hours a week at a rate of twenty-eight dollars an hour. Uh, for the period of December twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two through June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-three. Does that make more sense, Bill?
Sounds right to me.
All right, so my motion is, uh, and Sh- uh, Sherry, remind me of your last name.
Susie.
Susie, I don't know, you know, I actually know somebody with that name and I don't know why I can't remember it.
That's okay.
This motion is to appoint Sherry Susie as Town Treasurer uh, for the period of December twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two, to June thirty, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, with work hours of up to eighteen hours a week at the rate of twenty-eight dollars an hour.
Right. Is there a second?
I'll make this second.
We have a second, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Sherry, we're delighted to have you onboard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's been, it's been fun. It's been fun so far.
Hang on, hang on, it's a white knuckle ride.
Oh, you know.
We're going, we're going into budget.
You know, it's amazing, every town is unique, let me tell you, you all have it worked.
Oh, yeah.
And, you know, I've been at it so long and it's like, you know, you say you could ever learn anything new, well, you can.
You are.
You do, all the time, I'm like.
We have a habit of doing that to people.
Uh, yeah, you know, that makes it interesting.
Absolutely, well, thank you again for your service.
All right, so we've covered that one.
All right, back to the agenda, uh, remarks.
Remarks.
Hearing none, item F, items for next selectmen's meeting, we mentioned the, uh, Recreation Commission.
Yes.
Uh, the meeting at the school.
The, uh, the format of the meeting at the, uh, town, for town meeting on the eleventh of February. Anything else?
Not that I can think of.
Okay, folks, I'll entertain a motion.
A motion to adjourn?
Seconded.
I've got, uh, eight twenty-two. Thank you.